Welcome in today on Harrington TV, the Lower Marion Board of School Directors Candidate Forum. We'll be giving each of these eight candidates onstage today a chance to make their pitch for why you should vote for them. That's all, right now, live from Lower Marion High School Auditorium in Ardmore, Pennsylvania. You're watching Harrington TV News.
Hi, I'm Shelby Sparrow.
And I'm Lisa Proznitz.
On behalf of the Interschool Council, the League of Women Voters, the Committee Addressing Race and Education, the Committee for Special Education, the Beckton Empower Scholars, and Harrington TV, we'd like to welcome you to the 2019 Board of School Directors Candidate Forum. We're excited to continue this nonpartisan event.
All candidates on both the Democratic and Republican ticket have been invited to attend. The previously stated sponsoring organization, as well as students, parents, and taxpayers from around the community, have had the opportunity to submit questions for this event. As a reminder, this forum is being broadcasted live on Facebook. Please direct your friends and family not in attendance to herrittontv.com/live or Harrington TV's Facebook page. I'd now like to turn it over to captains of the Harrington and Lower Marion's debate teams, who will serve as our moderators for the event.
Thank you. Hello, I am Graham Branscombe, co-captain of the Harrington High School Debate Team, and I, along with Anna Finkel, Sophie Yang, and Teresa Lu Romeo, will serve as moderators for the evening. The candidates are seated left to right in alphabetical order. Unfortunately, Rob Eckstein was not able to join us due to an illness, but listing the names from left to right, candidates, please raise your hand when I say your name. We have Mary Brown, Christina Fink, Shayna Kalish, Lucy Klein, Peter Lee, Sean Mooreing, Subha Robinson, and Tanya Schreiber. Thank you, candidates. They are running for five seats over four-year terms, which will begin in December.
Thank you, Graham. The format of the evening will be as follows. Each candidate will read a one-minute opening statement. The order was determined by a random drawing. There will then be four rounds of questions. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer one question in each round. However, not every candidate will be given the same question. Each question will be given to two or three candidates randomly assigned by drawing. The drawings were held during committee meeting on Monday, October 21st. Responses will be limited to 90 seconds. The timer will signal a yellow flag when there are 20 seconds left, and a red flag when the time is up. At the red flag, the speaker may complete a sentence and then must stop.
Each candidate has been given two yellow index cards that provide an opportunity to speak for one minute. The cards may be used to extend a response to a question, respond to a question that was not asked of them, or to provide a rebuttal. To utilize a yellow card, a candidate should raise the yellow index card until acknowledged by a moderator. Once the yellow card is used, we ask that the candidate drop the card off the front of the table, so it may not be reused.
The final section will be closing statements of two minutes by each candidate, again determined by random drawing. Candidates, please do not mention the names of minors and students while speaking to preserve confidentiality. Additionally, we ask audience members to please hold their applause and verbal commentary throughout the event, silence their cellphones, and refrain from filming or recording the event. The event will be available on herrittontv.com and on vote411.org, a League of Women Voters site. At this point, we will begin opening statements. The statements are one minute and will be delivered by each candidate in the following randomized order. Subha Robinson, Peter Lee, Shayna Kalish, Sean Mooreing, Christina Fink, Tanya Schreiber, Mary Brown, and Lucy Klein.
First, Subha Robinson.
Thank you. I want to thank the ISC Care, League of Women Voters, LMSD Student Groups, and the other candidates for this forum. My name is Subha Robinson. I'm an incumbent school board director and current vice president of the school board. I'm running because I want to continue the hard work to eliminate the achievement gap, implement the strategic plan, and be responsive to enrollment growth while remaining fiscally responsible to the taxpayers of the district. Professionally, I'm a certified public accountant. I know about budgeting and fiscal policy and what it takes to run a large nonprofit organization. I've lived in Lower Marion for 24 years, and we moved here for the fantastic schools and educational opportunities. I would be honored to represent Lower Marion and Narberth for another term on the school board. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. Peter Lee?
Good evening. My name is Peter Lee, and I'm a Democrat running for Lower Marion School Director. I'd like to start by thanking the Harrington and Lower Marion Debate Teams and the sponsoring organizations for this forum. I appreciate the opportunity to participate tonight. My wife and I live in Ardmore with our three children, who all attend Lower Marion Schools. Professionally, I'm a consultant with a background in data analytics, technology, and strategy, and my work is focused on helping schools and educational nonprofits leverage technology to improve education for disadvantaged communities. I believe that all children deserve an excellent public education, and I'm committed to helping these organizations maximize their available resources to improve outcomes for their students. My professional experiences provide me with great appreciation for the quality of Lower Marion Schools and a set of skills that will help us maintain their quality in a fiscally responsible way. School director seats are at large, so I'll work to represent all families in Lower Marion and Narberth, and believe my skills and background will be assets to help the board make sound and transparent decisions.
Thank you. Shayna Kalish?
Good evening. My name's Shayna Kalish, and I'm running for Lower Marion School Director. I live in Marion Station with my husband Ari and our two children, Nina, who's six and attends kindergarten at Kinwood Elementary, and Wesley, who's two. I have a master's in educational psychology from Penn State. My highest priority is educating our children in a way that works best for them and for the families of our community. I'm especially interested in working on the curriculum committee to ensure that our students are engaged and successful in their school experience. As the parent of very young kids who will be amongst the first few grades to take part in the new grade division, I bring a unique and necessary perspective to the board. Because we're just at the beginning of their educational adventure, I'm committed to the success of our schools for the long haul. My priorities as school board director would be first and foremost academic excellence. It's what our taxpayers expect and our students deserve. To ensure low class size with the construction of a new middle school, to provide an equitable education for all students, to proceed in a fiscally responsible manner, and to pursue all avenues to expand kindergarten to full day. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you. Sean Mooreing?
Good evening. I want to first thank all of the organizers of this forum, and particularly the students who volunteered to engage in this process. Again, my name is Sean Mooreing, and I'm a lifelong Democrat and 13-year resident of Penn Wynn, and a parent of two students who have gone through all, every level in the Lower Marion Schools. Professionally, I have spent the last 20 years promoting social justice and equity for all in the philanthropic and nonprofit sectors. I currently serve as Director of Strategic Initiatives at Resources for Human Development, a national human services organization based in Philadelphia. Over the years, I have worked countless hours volunteering at every level in LMSD schools, running clubs for students, serving on parent councils, and most recently, serving on the district's Achievement Gap Task Force. If elected to the board, I intend to bring all of my experience and skills and background to bear on the successful implementation of the Lower Marion School District Strategic Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Fink?
Hello, my name is Christina Fink. Thank you very much for having me. I'm going to just spend a couple minutes on who I am. I'm a 30-year resident of Lower Marion. I was raised in Delaware County. I went to the University of Pennsylvania. I got a couple of degrees there, including my teaching certificate. I met my husband there, who is a Lower Marion High School graduate. We have three kids that have all been educated through the Lower Marion Schools. My three sons, one was on an IEP in a 504. The other one was in the gifted program, and I also have a high-performing average student. So I have experience with three very different children. I spent 13 years in big corporate business, working my way through marketing and sales to branch manager and regional manager, so I have big business, big budget experience. I currently own my own small business and residential leasing, and I own a large, grass-fed cattle operation where I sell directly to customers. And I think I would be a new voice on the school board, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Tanya Schreiber?
Thank you all for the effort you've put into this. My apologies for the microphone issue. The Lower Marion School Board recently proposed the creation of an ambassador program after determining that, and I quote, "Information from the internal district sources is seen as propaganda." This is a brave admission from a school district that has struggled to collaborate to find solutions to the many challenges, many challenging issues facing Lower Marion. Many issues such as the lack of full-day kindergarten, school start times, the change of school start times, and the development of the recently purchased 1860 building will impact the health of our children and the financial well-being of our entire district. The decisions made by this board over the next two years will impact Lower Marion for generations. I want to help change this culture, to find the many talented members of our community here, the data, brainstorm innovative solutions, and discuss priorities. I've been attending school board meetings, Lower Marion School Board meetings, since 2014, and I've watched them spend millions of dollars, of our tax dollars, fighting neighbors, special education families, stonely advocates, and sidewalks, and I'd like to help make that change.
Thank you. Mary Brown?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving your time tonight to come to this very important forum. I also want to acknowledge the organizers, Shelby and Lisa, and all of the other sponsors. I speak first as a parent of five children, all of whom attended Lower Marion Schools and who are all gainfully employed thanks to the fabulous education that they earned here. Our three children went to Harrington and two went to Lower Marion, and we've got quite a range of experiences in terms of elementary schools. I also started teaching Latin at Harrington in 1974, and I'm currently an adjunct professor and visiting fellow at St. Joseph's University. I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit five-state, and I would like to bring my 46 years of education, my commitment to every child, every family in Lower Marion and Narberth, and the executive director's experience that I have to this role. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Lucy Klein?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Lucy Klein. My husband and I live in North Ardmore with our three children, who all attend Lower Marion Schools. I've been very involved in the district for the past 12 years as the HSA President at Penn Valley Elementary School and the President of the Interschool Council. One of my many roles with the ISC was to help organize this event in past years. In 2017, one of the questions focused on special education. Several of the candidates considered this an unfair question, despite the fact that more than a third of LMSD students receive special education services of some sort. That's when I realized that we need leadership that truly understands public education and why I wanted to be on this side of the table tonight. My deep knowledge of the district, both its strengths and its weaknesses, combined with my professional experience as a nonprofit manager, a city planner, and Assistant Deputy Mayor of Philadelphia, provide me with the necessary budget and policy experience, and I will work to instill an environment that is transparent, responsive, and receptive to the community at large.
Thank you, candidates. We will now begin the first round of questions. All eight candidates will answer one of three questions in this round. Again, candidates may use their two yellow cards to answer a question they have not been assigned, or to extend their time on an answer.
Question one. The three candidates who will be answering this question are Peter Lee, Tanya Schreiber, and Sean Mooreing. The question is, according to the Lower Marion School District's Challenge Success Survey, over 72% of high school students report feeling often or always stressed about school. As a board member, what ideas and plans would you have for the school board to address stressful academic culture and improve students' overall well-being? First, Peter Lee.
Thank you. That's a great question. I think first and foremost, we should focus on the strategic plan that was recently developed. I think it actually has a lot of great ideas for addressing some of those things. You know, redefining success, going beyond test scores will help reduce stress. Having students have a bigger voice in the schools, you know, one of the prongs of the strategic plan is student-driven schools, as well as just the sense of community and not having everything be top-down. In addition to that, you know, part of the stress, and the literature is pretty clear on this, is part of the stress is actually from the school start times and the lack of sleep. So as we move forward and, you know, commit to doing what we need to do to move the start times back to ensure that the kids are getting enough rest, I think, you know, we'll do, take a lot of steps in that direction.
Tanya Schreiber?
Hi, this is a topic dear to my heart. I have a 12-year-old son, and so I'm a couple of years away from this, but I did spend nine years as an admissions advisor. I talked to countless students who were trying to get into Harvard, Wharton, and Stanford, and had been misled about what it is that those schools are looking for. I also spent two years on the Wharton Admissions Committee, and really struggled to understand why children are misled about what these top programs are looking for. They're looking for children who've taken the opportunity and been given the environment to grow and learn and find their passions and be challenged. And yet, we continue to create high school environments that burden students with additional stresses to take extra classes, do yet more homework, and join yet more extracurriculars. And I think that if we want to listen to what all these schools are saying about what they really want from these students, we need to change what the cultures are in these schools. We need to modify what we, how we set them against each other, and have them race against each other, and instead create an environment where we scale back the expectations when it comes to homework, as well as the expectation of the number of hours they're going to spend on athletics and extracurricular activities, so that they can really take the time to find what they're interested in and pursue those. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Mooreing?
Thank you, and thank you for this question, especially as a parent of a recent graduate from LM, and my youngest son is a current junior here, is in the all-important junior year, as he's preparing for his college applications and all of that. So I think that, I thought the survey was extremely telling, and am very excited about the path that the school district is on in terms of the strategic plan and looking at varying ways of success. And I think that as a school board member, I would continue to support that and also encourage us to continue to pursue and to push balance for our students. I think in terms of how we are, for instance, no longer mandating that students take the AP exam as a requirement, but if they have the option, take some of that pressure off, and making sure that we continue to support varying ways of success like that to ensure that we're not putting undue pressure on our students.
Thank you.
For question two, the two candidates who will be answering this question are Subha Robinson and Shayna Kalish. The question is, the school district recommended that students and families read The Book of Luca, a book that espouses the values of physical exercise, in-person communications, and fostering a sense of community. What changes do you propose making to the school day to help reflect the values in the book and improve our students' mental health? First, Subha Robinson.
Thank you for the question. The Book of Luca does talk about happiness and physical well-being, as well as emotional well-being. And in terms of the student culture, I would say lunch and learn has been a great addition. I would pursue that and continue to focus on having the students have choice in their endeavors during the day. Students are allowed to walk around, relate to one another, go to classes, and see teachers on a more informal level. And I would say that if we were to make any other change that would benefit the students, it would have to be research-based and sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Shayna Kalish?
Thank you for the question. Excuse me. I was thinking something in reference to the strategic plans, particularly in reference to student-centered schools. I would look really hard at, adults talk a lot about having work-life balance, about how much time they want to spend at work, and how much time they want to spend with their friends and their family and doing hobbies, and that's no different for our students in our schools. And so I would want to direct our administration to focus on that for our kids, to make things like making homework minimal but meaningful, so the time that children are spending on homework is actually reinforcing what they're learning and not busy work. I abhor busy work for homework. And that there is, I would continue to encourage lots of opportunity for physical movement, be that varsity sport, club sport, more offerings for gym class, more opportunities to go outside, more playground space for kids at the lower levels, and I would absolutely support the continued use of mental health professionals in the schools to help guide and counsel students as they need help coping with the stresses of their educational experience and their life experiences.
Thank you, candidates.
Question three. The three candidates who will be answering this question are Mary Brown, Christina Fink, and Lucy Klein. The question is, the Philadelphia school system added Eid-All-Fitr to their school calendar in 2016, and the Pennsylvania Senate adopted a resolution to recognize it as a holiday in 2017. Additionally, HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, are underrepresented in college fairs in Lower Marion School District. What similar ideas and steps would you propose to ensure the equal and fair treatment of the various religious, ethnic, and racial backgrounds of students in our community? First, Mary Brown.
Hi, last weekend, organized a conference in Silver Spring, Maryland, addressing the inherent racism in the world of classics, and that's Latin and Greek. And so we had prominent speakers, national speakers, come to talk with, engage with teachers at the secondary school level and the college and university level, to talk about ways in which we could develop opportunities for students, all students, in various fields of study, primarily in the classics, because it is considered as, perhaps misperceived as an elitist course of studies. So it's a very important topic. I think that one way we can do that here in Lower Marion School District is to identify what the requirements are, or the internal requirements of any given course of study, and communicate that through the guidance counselors carefully, so that all students feel encouraged to enroll in courses. I think that there is something salient here. I have, as I said, I've been involved with Lower Marion Schools since 1974, and it's always been remarkable to me, and I'm going to be very candid, that there aren't very many students of color in the musical groups. And that's not a criticism of anyone, but I'm just saying that there are things that we can do at the basic level to make opportunities available to all students.
Thank you. Christina Fink?
Yeah, so these are very important questions, and I do think we continue to struggle, like a lot of school districts, with these, with the answers to these questions. I think in terms of the expansion of needing to recognize various holidays and other special days for various groups, I think we need to maybe take a little page out of corporate America and have sort of like a floating couple of holidays, meaning the student is permitted with their family to say, I need to take this day and that day, or whatever it is, we give a couple of days off, that you can then select for your family, and there are no ramifications or repercussions academically for that. And the teachers are required with the administration to figure out a way to make sure that that child who missed class for the time that they needed to take off is fully informed as to how to catch up. So we really have to come up with a zero-loss perspective, but I do think that is where maybe we take a page out of corporate. Now, did I get it correct that your question was that the, that minority colleges were underrepresented at the fair? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that one. Was that it? Yes?
Yes, that was part of the question.
Yeah, so obviously, we need to have an outreach program where we send maybe delegates from our school district to those colleges, and go on a little bus trip and say, we want you to come here, we have students for you, and we want to have you at our, in our school. So I think we need to do the outreach and go out there and tell them we have students for them, because sometimes it is the fact that they might not think that they're going to be getting many students from this school district, and therefore, they're not going to spend their time coming here. So I do think it's a match.
Thank you, Mrs. Fink.
Thank you. Finally, Lucy Klein?
Thank you again. And thank you for the question. I think that there, it ties in with a lot of work that the district is doing around the achievement gap and around cultural proficiency, and really changing the culture within our schools and understanding our implicit biases. And I think as we address that more as a district, a part of that can be working on that issue a little bit more with the students as well as the staff. I think also in terms, speaking of staff, the ability to recruit more teachers of color, I think would be incredibly helpful in our district, and I know that that is a priority of the superintendent that came out of the Achievement Task Force, sort of very targeted recruiting of teachers of color, which I think is incredibly important. Across the nation, there are 50% of the schools that have no teachers of color, when there's only 50% of the kids in the schools that are white. And then finally, with respect to the, to the religion, sort of understanding and being respectful of different religions, I know that in New Jersey, this, I think it's the state that gives, all of the schools receive a list of all of the different holidays for many different, for, I don't know if it's all of the religions, but many different religions, and that's provided to the staff and the teachers of all the schools, and so that they are clearly aware of various holidays, and at least that can be a beginning point, like a start of conversation in terms of awareness and being respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Sean Mooreing?
Thank you. I wanted to just weigh in on this topic, because I think it is one that's extremely important and one that I have spent a little bit of time in terms of working with the Achievement Gap Task Force, and agree with Lucy around the notion of hiring being very intentional in terms of hiring staff of color. There is a new counselor, college counselor, actually, that was hired recently, starting this year, that will, I think, bring a different perspective, and I think can add to making sure that we are continuing to expand opportunities for minority students. I also very applaud the Beckton Scholars Program and the work that they've been doing with our minority students in really focusing on academics and expansion of opportunities, particularly around some of the HBCU exposure opportunities.
Thank you, candidates. We will now begin the second round. All eight candidates will answer one of the three questions in this round.
Question one. The two candidates who will be answering this question are Sean Mooreing and Lucy Klein. The question is, the entire community is gravely concerned about student drug activity and vaping. What immediate measures do you believe the school board should take to remedy this crisis? First, Sean Mooreing.
Thank you. That's a great question, particularly with a lot of the concerns that have been coming out with the ramifications of the vaping on our students' health. I think it's important that we take it seriously as a school board and work very closely with the superintendent and teachers in terms of making sure that we have policies that don't necessarily incumbent on students' rights, but make sure that we are paying very close attention and putting in the safeguards in terms of drugs, that way you're working closely with the police department to ensure that our schools are safe and drug-free, that it's something that we must take seriously as a district and make sure that we are providing the superintendent and the administration with the tools that they need to address these issues.
Thank you. Lucy Klein?
I agree with Sean that it's very important that we, as a board, would direct the superintendent and his staff to address this issue. It is a very concerning issue across the country, not just in our schools, but in schools across the country. I was very pleased to learn last week, Mr. Weinstein at Harrington, who's the principal at Harrington, had a sort of a meet, the principal meeting, and one of the discussion topics at that meeting was about vaping, and he is spearheading a, I don't think it's a task force. a task force or a project, but sort of work with the other principals, putting together information to figure out exactly what it is that the school, schools can be doing and should be doing. One of the questions that I had was about, I know other schools in other parts of the country have detectors that they put in the bathrooms, because it seems as if that's where a lot of the vaping happens. He indicated, actually, that the technology isn't quite there yet and that they don't seem to work as well as they can or should or probably will, but technology like that, I think, is a reasonable thing to look into as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Oh, yes. Christina Fink.
I think this is just a, one of those topics that we need to make it real, we need to make it visual, we need to get together, and we need to make sure the kids know what they're talking about. So why can't we have a mandatory auditorium where the whole school gets together in pieces, or we might not be able to seat everybody at once, where we bring medical doctors from our area in to show the photographs of exactly what the vaping does, and it coats your lungs, and then it goes in as a vapor, and it attaches to your lungs as a solid, and then try to, even since we have the resources, see if we have one of these children that has survived a vaping incident where they've been hospitalized for many, many weeks, and have them come in and talk to our kids. We need to make it real, we need to make it mandatory, we need to bring in pictures, we need to bring our professionals in to make it real, or else they're just not going to listen. More detection items are fine, but we, as children, detect, you know, we're able to get away with all kinds of stuff, and the current children do the same, so I think we need to think a little bit more dynamically. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Question two. The three candidates who will be answering this question are Tanya Schreiber, Peter Lee, and Suba Robinson. The question is, this spring, the school board is expected to vote on the recent recommendations by the administration on school start times. Please share your thoughts on the proposed change and how you would vote on this issue. First, Tanya Schreiber.
Thank you. This change is long overdue. I know that this school district has been hearing this information for over a decade about the impact, the positive impact that this could have on students' mental health. We're sitting here talking about drug use, et cetera. This is a critical issue, and I'm so glad that they were able to pull neighbors together and experts in the field and finally make this change. I wish that we'd been the leaders in it versus waiting for our neighbors to do it first. I would obviously vote to support it. I know that there is some pushback from the community who has, some of them are, feel they've been hearing it for the first time, so I think that there should be a lot of effort put into engagement meetings versus the listening tours where we can get some of the data that was used to make the decision. I know a lot of people want to know whether or not we're just transferring the problem to the elementary schools, and I think that that information needs to get out there, and if there is a possibility of keeping the elementary school start time a little later, if it's a budget issue that's keeping that from happening, I think we need to get that information and the choices and the trade-offs into the community so that they can discuss it and understand better why this decision was made. It was carefully made, it was cautiously made, it is critical to do, I'm glad it's finally happening.
Thank you. Peter Lee.
So, I definitely support later start times, and I think it's, it's both, there's, there's a lot of compelling evidence, and there are a number of districts starting to move in this direction. I think the, just generally, the notion that we're late on this, I, I don't think is true. We're not on the bleeding edge, but if you look at the report that was just released by the state, there are very few schools that are starting, high schools that are starting 8:30 or later, which is the recommendation. And in addition, some of the schools that did it early only moved their start times 15 minutes. So I think as we go through this, we want to be thoughtful, we want to make sure we have a comprehensive plan and that we have a, an implementation plan that also takes into consideration that there will be, you know, potentially unintended consequences for other demographic groups, other schools, and we want to make sure that the entire community is invested in this, you know? Communication's going to be key, making sure that there's a minimum financial impact. But, you know, as someone with both elementary school kids and, and high school kids, I, I want to make sure that, that we're not just passing the, the load off to another group of kids, that we do it thoughtfully and that everyone's on board.
Thank you. Suba Robinson.
Thank you. As a matter of fact, we're having this meeting tomorrow night to roll out this plan about the school start times in this auditorium at 7 o'clock, so I invite everyone to come back to that. As far as I know, for my four children, it's been a long road in terms of school start times and having it go past 8 o'clock. My older two were not in favor of it, they did not want to come home after the elementary school students. My younger two are in favor of it, and they want to sleep in later and take advantage of that. So I guess it's happening at the right time for my family. In terms of my vote, I haven't decided. I need to hear all the information. I know the research and the, the information with respect to school start times and health. I just need to know how it will impact the students that we're changing it onto, and also what the community thinks. I want to hear from everyone in the community, and that's what the meetings between now and March are all about. So I encourage everyone to attend a meeting, a focus group, and express your concerns, ideas, and maybe a new and, and better plan will come about. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates.
Question three. The three candidates who will be answering this question are Mary Brown, Christina Fink, and Shayna Kalish. The question, the district's strategic plan, "All Forward," emphasizes student voice throughout this district and in our schools. Numerous school districts in the area include non-voting school, student representatives on their school boards. Lower Marion, however, does not. Would you be in favor of adding student representatives to our school board, and to what extent would they participate or vote? What other measures would you implement on the school board to improve student voice in the decision-making process? First, Mary Brown.
The "All Forward" will be five years old November 17th, and it's a tremendous, tremendous plan, and it is a transformative curriculum, and the strategy approach is very good. I believe that it is important to have you and your voice represented in the school board. So I am an advocate of school board inclusion of students from the high schools. I think that what you experience and what knowledge you can bring to us on the school board is invaluable, we would not know it in any other way, and I would look forward to working with students on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis on issues that you think are important and coming to a solution to benefit everyone.
Thank you. Now, Christina Fink.
Yeah, I think this is great. I think many, many times, school boards get very disengaged from actually the population because they don't really spend much time in school, unless they're lucky enough to be a parent at the schools at the same time, then they stay engaged on whatever level that is. I am fully supportive of students being on the school board, non-voting, but they would, and we need to be very careful about who we put on, who we invite there. It can't just be the most popular kids, it can't be the ones that are the most vocal only, it cannot be just the ones who are, are very confident. Like, we would need to come up with an equation where we have all the different voices of the school that hear the different corners of the school, because we, as a person, when we move through our community, move through our families, move through our corporations, we sometimes just tune in to hear certain parts of it, we don't hear all of it. So it's very, very important to not only have this done, I love this idea, make sure they're very engaged and they come to the boards, but that we're very careful about making sure we have a very diverse, not just diverse in race and gender, but also diverse in the way the students look at the world, because we have different components of students that exist all together at the same time. Non-voting, because I don't think they should have the final vote, it should be up to the adults on the, on the board, but also they should be, have to go back to their communities, back in the schools, and they should be able to have to bring forth information that they get from their internal sessions and wrap sessions with their fellow students. So I love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Shayna Kalish.
Thank you for this question. I actually heard about it for the first time when I was in this room on Monday for the school board executive meeting, and one of your classmates brought it up during the community comment section, and I thought it was a really great idea. The whole point of our school system is to serve the students of our schools, and a great way to do that is to hear from those students. So, yes, I would be in support of putting N or some student representative, representatives on the board. I can't say to what degree they would be voting or participation, because I know there are legal rules, because of their elected positions, there are legal rules based on that, and I wouldn't want to speak out of turn on that. But I think that it really gets, what your question really gets at how to involve our students in the administration of their schools. And I think that having, having a student member on the board or student members on the board could really increase communication with the student population, and also, I would want to try and have more broad feedback, if we could do regular informal student surveys, poll questions, I know those are really easy to do, and just sort of to, as people who are not walking the halls of your schools every day, to really try and keep our pulse on what your opinions are, because they matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now begin the third round. All eight candidates will answer one of the three questions in this round. Question one. The three candidates who will be answering this question are Shayna Kalish, Suba Robinson, and Mary Brown. The question is, how would you ensure racial equity within the gifted program? Please be specific. First, Shayna Kalish.
Thank you. So this is absolutely an important thing, and it's a problem that isn't necessarily only touching our district, it's a problem nationwide of underrepresentation of minority students of all stripes in, in gifted and talented programs and over-representation in certain other programs. So I think one of the things that I would absolutely support is the continued use and the rollout of universal screening for gifted program that's participating in the elementary education level, because the kids that are in gifted are going to be more likely to continue that. Partnering with that, I would also look at the teacher training side and emphasize, do more diversity training, sounds cute, but it's, do more training on, for the teachers to really assess their own bias and look past it to the best of their personal abilities, to hire more diverse teaching staff, so that that is less of an inherent bias, and to encourage their selection of a more broader group, and to encourage more students of color to participate in AP classes and the IB program as we continue forward, because sometimes it, the voice of confidence of a teacher that you trust is an important thing, and I think we need more teachers to be that voice for our minority students in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Suba Robinson.
I agree with everything that Shayna just mentioned. In addition, we've hired a consultant to help us remove some of the biases in the universal gifted screening, to help us hone in on those talented students, and there are, we just had a program evaluation of the gifted program, and out of that program evaluation came the need for additional input. There's an, a committee that's actually working on implementing the findings of the gifted program evaluation. One of the things that that's working on is revamping how we deliver gifted services to our students. First, through kindergarten through fourth grade, would have a push-in rather than a pull-out from now on, and that's is rolling out next year. So that way, all the teachers would be trained in terms of gifted education and, thank you, and the students would all get to participate, not just the gifted students. Only the gifted students would be tracked and evaluated along the way, but all the students could participate. That's one way that we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Brown.
I have direct experience here at Lower Marion. I was the startup sponsor of homework clubs and music mentors. So Lower Marion students went on a weekly basis to three elementary schools, their own, original, and we worked with children from the various grades and cultivated a love of learning, which is essential. I believe that any, any systemic change that we need to consider has to start with kindergarten, and that, of course, addresses the issue of a full-day kindergarten here, which is very important. So I would go back to this concept of identifying skills that are part of any academic endeavor and communicating those skills carefully at the early grades, so that children with various learning capacities, including hands-on fixer spacious, spacers, sorry, fixer spaces and maker spaces, so that children can explore in different ways at the early years and continue that through the 12 years of high school. We can do this. We can include all people, all children and all learners in these programs.
Thank you. Peter Lee.
Thank you. So all the points that were brought up were excellent. I think, you know, incorporating more cultural competence and sensitivity into the gifted program and universal screening and all of these things are very important. I think we should also recognize, though, that it's actually, a, a lot of the, the difference there is, is a byproduct of the achievement gap. And so any strategy we use actually needs to, to, to go hand-in-hand with an overall achievement gap strategy. You know, Mary brought up early edu, kindergarten, I think, you know, there are two things that are generally proven in most studies to help close the achievement gap. One is early education, and the second is hiring teachers of color. So I would like to see a, a comprehensive solution that not just addresses the program itself, but also is a, a more holistic solution towards addressing that.
Thank you, candidates.
Question two. The three candidates who will be answering this question are Peter Lee, Christina Fink, and Sean Mooring. The question, which aspects of the district's current special education programming are working well, and which do you feel need to be addressed? First, Peter Lee.
Thank you. This is a really important question, because unlike many districts, we have a, a very large percentage of our kids receiving special education services of some sort, between IEPs, gifted IEPs and the 504s, it's almost 40% of our kids, so it's not just a, a subgroup. You know, I, as far as what's working or not working, you know, I, I'm not an expert in this area. Certainly, I can talk about the experience of my kids having gone, received some of the specialized education services. I think it all comes down to being aggressive in program evaluation. I know Dr. Paul has recently started looking at our programs, and we need to look at what investments we're making and how effective they are. Are we getting return on, on our investment? We need to get feedback from the kids and the parents, and I think, you know, we're constantly evolving and constantly improving the services that we're providing.
Thank you. Christina Fink.
So this is a hard one, because special education has a thousand different types of children in it. So when we talk about what's working and what's not working, it really becomes a very personal thing for the family and for the child. I do think we have a good gifted program, I think we do a pretty good job, but we can always do better. I do think, having had a child on an IEP and a 504, I was personally very pleased with how I interacted with the school district, but I was also very realistic about hearing what they had to say and altering sometimes my perspective on what was going on in, in the schools. I do think we need to keep looking at it, I am certainly not an expert. I do think we need to make sure that we are balancing the needs of the entire classroom with the needs of the special education children, and I think it is an enormous challenge, a huge challenge. So I really, I know I'm not saying that much here, but I'm being very honest, and I think we're going to need to start I think we're going to need to start doing a little bit better testing, too, because I think the testing that the school district does on the children is inadequate. We somehow need to have another group that sort of double-checks our school-sponsored testing because they miss a lot of things, and then it just makes the family angry, and then the family realizes that they should have gone in a different direction, but they, they weren't told that. And I think there's a lot of anger because everybody's trying to help these children. The parents want to help their children. They're not feeling like they're getting all the information at the right time. So, I'm sorry, that's the best I can do, but I, I am passionate about it because I've been served. My children have been served in that area. Thank you.
Now, Mary Brown.
Reluctant to throw this, but I will. This is a very, very important topic, and I will preface by saying that in my three years at St. Joe's University through the Kinney Center, I have had in my classes students who are on the autism spectrum. It comes to the individual teacher responsibility to care for every student in his or her charge comes to the individual teacher. And there are ways in which every teacher can meet each student and customize learning according to the way in which the student learns naturally and develop other ways of learning. I can prove it. It's possible, it can be done, and it can be encouraged and nurtured.
Thank you. Mrs. Schreiber? Oh, Sean was first. My apologies. Sean.
Thank you. Thank you. So, yes, I think this is definitely an extremely important question because, again, I think we have to make sure that as a school board, we are continued to be focused on all learners. And as Peter shared and my other colleagues on the, on the DS have shared, I'm not a special education expert, but it is an area that I think we need to continue to invest in and evaluate. Dr. Paul, as Peter mentioned, has conducted some evaluation that we need to make sure that we are looking at how special, how students are directed into special education. There is a history in this country in terms of some focusing or larger recommendations for students of color into special education, so we need to evaluate what that looks like and why that is and make sure that we're being equitable in terms of how students are directed into it and how they're supported. And also would support more push-in instead of pull-out in terms of incorporating and making sure that our students are not feeling specified or targeted in their educational opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now, I apologize for that mistake. Yeah, yeah. And now for Tanya.
This is a critically important area for, for this community. It's something that we've, that we're known for, is being a community that serves everyone and tries to meet the needs of all children. And I, I just wanted to say that I know that there has been, this is part of the reason class size is so important, and I know that there's all, there's huge emphasis on making sure that we don't let that number continue to creep up in the last few years when they've gone one or two extra kids per class. It does impact the children. It does impact teachers' ability to meet the needs of each individual child, especially the special education children. The district, though, has been more proactive. They've added a tutoring program this year and to help children manage their needs and manage their executive function, which has been a huge benefit. But I think that one of the things we can do is be even more responsive to those parents. A lot of them are very frustrated by the 60-day delay, the, how long it takes, having to get lawyers sometimes to fight with the school district, and I think that there is an opportunity to be more collaborative with those families.
Thank you. And Mrs. Klein.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, special education and the need to make sure that we fully understand the role and the need for it as, as providers of public education. I just want to add to some of what has been brought up before, that I think that the common thread to gifted education and special education programming and for everyone in between, it's not really quite a between, is that we need to know how to best teach them and encourage students who learn differently, and differentiation training for our teachers can really help that, and that's a true best practice for everyone, for every type of student and every type of learner. And I also think a big piece that we spoke about and Tanya brought up is about in communication. And one thing that the district can do better is improve the communication with the parents during the IEP and the GIEP and the 504 process is really provide sort of a, so that the parents know the entire grouping of services that are offered so that they can work with the stool to really find the best services for their kids.
Thank you.
Question three. The two candidates who will be answering this question are Tanya Schreiber and Lucy Klein. The question is, what are your thoughts on the current school board budget and tax decisions? And please mention any specific changes or improvements that you would hope to see in your term if elected. First, Tanya Schreiber.
So, my background, I have a bachelor's degree from Cornell in Industrial and Labor Relations, then I got my MBA at Wharton, and I negotiated labor contracts for a while, and we used to, one of the themes, I guess, of my career is you can do anything, but you can't do everything. And we're faced with constraints. We have more kids. You guys, if you're here, you probably know the constraints that are facing us. Every decision we make with every dollar is something else we're not doing. And I think that the, the way we engage the community, everybody wants everything, but they don't under, that, there's other things that are, what we decide as a community is the most important thing. We have to have a more engaged discussion with our community. Do we want full-day kindergarten? Do we want elementary school start times to be later while moving up high school times? All of those things can be done, but we need to decide what we're willing to trade off. And I don't think that currently the school district does enough proactive communication when it comes to involving the community and what it is that we prioritize, what we want, what we envision this community being and what we envision the school district being. And as I said before, I think we do spend too much money fighting everybody. I think the legal expenses that are accrued when we decide to battle everything out instead of using the experts in our community and talking to the board of directors, talking to the parents, et cetera, and getting the legal fees out of this, all that money would go back to the students and the academics.
Thank you. Lucy Klein.
So, LMSD has a very big budget, and that budget is really driven by the priority of our community and the priorities such as keeping our class sizes small. But really, we need to respect the fact that the biggest driver of our budget is really being impacted by our surge in enrollment. We have more than 20% more students than we had 10 years ago, and staffing is about 75% of our budget. So, we need to keep that in mind as we think about our budgeting process. I do think that one of the most effective ways to understand costs and look for cost-saving opportunities is through program evaluation. When I worked for the city of Philadelphia, and as an assistant deputy mayor, we had a very specific role, which was to review the city services and look for opportunities to cut costs, and I think that that's something that we can be doing in Lower Marion. The district did recently hire Dr. Paul for the specific purpose of evaluating programs within the district, and I would continue to make sure that those program evaluations include cost analysis as part of her work. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We will now begin the fourth and final round. All eight candidates will answer one of the three questions in this round. As a final reminder, candidates may use their two yellow cards to answer a question that they have not been assigned or to extend their time on an answer.
Question one. The two candidates who will be answering this question are Mary Brown and Sean Moore. The question, concerns before the school board often require interrelation with residents, the Lower Marion Board of Commissioners, and other officials. How should the school board and township work together to anticipate these issues and collaboratively develop solutions? First, Mary Brown.
I believe that this is happening, that there have been some meetings involving the commissioners and the school board, and I applaud those efforts. I do know that in reading the current legal brief, that's excellent, if you haven't read it, regarding the appeal, it's worth your time reading, that we should use more effectively the Main Line Times because that is cited in the brief. That's one of the local outlets, if you will, for communication. I believe that with Mrs. Buckman in the communications director's position, there are frequent, frequent communications. It's up to us to read them and to make sure that we understand, and there is free communication back and forth. So, I'm very pleased with what the current school board is doing in terms of communications, and I would recommend that there be a weekly or some regular publication of current decisions in the Main Line Times.
Thank you. Sean Moore.
Thank you for the question. I do agree that communication within the district is an issue of critical importance and one that, if elected, I would continue to support. I do recognize that it is also one of the pillars within the strategic plan. I think that definitely the addition of Ms. Buckman has made, has increased the level of communication coming out of the district. One thing that I think could be worked on is, is the increase in two-way communication. How are, the district is hearing from parents and other stakeholders in the community and do agree that there, we need to put some effort into getting out into the community so that we can hear the community's voice more often and have more active engagement.
Thank you. And Mrs. Schreiber.
I wish I'd kept both cards for this. As I said, I've been attending Board of Commissioner meetings and school board meetings for about six years now, and there's a very different approach to how they interact with each other. Oftentimes, when there's a communication that goes out, the Board of Commissioners gets it from their constituents who are parents in the school board. I'm hoping that the ambassador program could improve that. If, for example, ambassadors are assigned to the civic associations, then there could be an opportunity to see the presentations ahead of time, have the civics collect the questions, bring them forward to the meetings, have those meetings be publicly available. But right now, it's a very adversarial relationship. If the school board's presenting something to the Board of Commissioners, they pay an attorney to attend. If the Board of Commissioners asks for information from the school board, they have to, they, they often don't get it in time, or they don't get it very quickly. And so, if you watch any of the Board of Commissioners meetings, it's a very, very adversarial process, and I do think that there, it's time, it is long past time for these two groups to work more effectively together. Thank you.
The three candidates who will be answering this question are Christina Fink, Tanya Schreiber, and Lucy Klein. The question is, what steps do you plan to take to ensure the significant future hiring of racially diverse teachers, counselors, staff, and administrators? First is Christina Fink.
Well, this is a very important thing. We always need to be looking at our population and what its makeup is, and then whether we reflect that population in the appropriate, in the correct ways or the, the right proportions within our leadership and our teachers. So, we need to always be looking at the fact that, oh, we're 74% white right now, and we are eight, I think seven or eight percent black, and we are, et cetera. We go with Latin, Asian, and we need to make sure that we are actively going after teachers that represent our population. I, I think it's, it's hard because in corporate America, we all, they also have the same challenges of finding diverse candidates that are, that are great. So, we need to be out there beating the bushes. One thing that I think we underutilize is student teach, what do you call it, substitute teaching. I think we need to take our ridiculous $110 per day and make it at least 200 to 250 and try to encourage great teachers that want an entree into our school district to come and teach. We get to see them in action, we get to be very attractive, and then we actively go out there and tell the community that if you're a great substitute teacher and we like what we see in the classroom when you substitute, then you have a fast track into being a potential teacher full-time. So, I think that we underutilize that, and right now, there's a shortage of substitute teachers, but it's only because we're not paying them enough, and I don't think we're utilizing that as an entree to actually fix one of these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tanya Schreiber.
It's a great question. If it was easy to solve, someone would have solved it by now. You want to provide the best you can for the Lower Marion students, but you don't want to siphon the best students, teachers away from our neighbor who's so desperately in need of great teachers. So, how do we keep from stealing the Philly teachers and still provide the mentors that our community needs? I think that we should start working with the teachers that we currently have and ask them how, what they feel the challenges are, why, whether or not they would do engagement surveys, find out whether or not they would recommend this job to their peers. That's all teachers. Start identifying whether or not we have a retention. The rate is the same for teachers of color versus non-teachers of color, so, or teachers, anyway. So, identify whether or not we have higher turnover in those groups. Identify whether or not they want to stay here and find out from then how we can attract people that want to be teachers and maybe, what we would say in corporate is, you know, grow our own people, see if we can develop our own talent, create proactive internship programs, student-teacher programs. There's opportunities for us to cultivate these relationships and get the people we want to be here, but we need to make, be very conscious of the fact that we don't want to harm, or I don't think we, I think we should be cognizant of the fact that we could harm our neighbors if we're not very careful about our approach.
Thank you. Oh.
I think I wanted to spend a little more time on this because something that I'm very passionate about is teaching and teachers. It's all about the teachers. It's all about the teachers. You can have the crappiest classroom, as long as it's holding water, and you can have a place to sit with a pencil and a book, and you can have a teacher that, you can have a classroom that learns magnificently in that space because of the teacher. So, we have to always be going after the best teachers, and we have to let those teachers do their beautiful thing in the classrooms because there's a lot of teachers feeling very fenced. We try to hire the best. We want to hire the best of every type, every, every race, every, every gender, but we, we always need to have an eye on the ball. It's all about the teachers. So, I just want to let you know that, that there's nothing that is more important in education than the teachers. Thank you.
We're going to go with Lucy Klein first. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a very important question and a very important issue. The board has set, the existing board has set a priority in terms of the achievement gap, as has the superintendent. It's something that is very important to him. And as part of the achievement task force, one of the primary goals is to do more targeted recruitment of teachers of colors, and I believe I want to tie it into the question about the HBCUs and how to, to do more targeted recruitment and outreach to the HBCUs, not just for our students to potentially go there, but also to look to them to see if there are teachers and potential teachers that could come to Lower Marion and really bring a little bit more breadth and depth to our teaching staff.
Thank you. Shayna Kalish.
So, I worry that sometimes in this discussion, we talk about diversity of staff being proportional to the diversity of our student body, and I think that's kind of stupid. I think that having a diverse staff, be it racially, be it religious, be it their gender or their sexual orientation, is only going to redound to the benefit of our entire community. And, you know, there, people sometimes talk about diversity hires, at diversity hires, as, as if they're like, it's a lot of tokenism, and I think that's incredibly disrespectful. Somebody's skin color has absolutely nothing to do with the quality of teachers that are, and there are amazing black teachers, there are amazing brown teachers, there are amazing queer teachers, and we need to continue to work with the administration of our district to work hard to recruit those people. And I, I, we can go beyond Philly, but there are wonderful teachers in Philly. We have a lot of colleges that educate a lot of student teachers, and we should have them here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Brown?
With my mic on, I'll follow Shayna. Yes, St. Joe's University has just launched the new College of Health Studies and Education, and it is a very developed program in terms of training teachers in every field, all teachers, and everyone probably knows that at the university level, the issue of diversity and anti-racist practices in admission is all over. Everybody's talking about-
Everybody's talking about that, as we should, and everyone's trying to do something about it. Imagine that you are the only black person in your school or the only black person in your Latin class. You need to see people of color or people who are like you teaching in positions instructing, and that's very, very important. So I think that there is some value in that we have a true diversity within our teaching staff, not only teachers, our coaches, counselors, everyone including.
Thank you, candidates. For the third question, the three candidates who will be answering this question are Suba Robinson, Shayna Kalish, and Peter Lee. The question is, if elected, what do you hope would be the key accomplishments of the board during your time of service? First, Suba Robinson.
I think that, this is a very weighty question. Thank you for it. As far as accomplishments, we've made some progress, but we can make more in terms of the achievement gap. I think that our path now to identify students early on, to push in with gifted program, and to identify students who can take part in AP classes as well as take part in IB program are, are all steps in the right direction. We need to continue to focus on diversity in our teachers and staff. And another goal that I would have is to have people, to have better communication with the stakeholders of the district. Essentially, we get community comments, we respond to them. However, there seems to be a disconnect between our responses and the next community comment that comes in. So some communication effort would be helpful. And finally, I'd like to continue on our path of, of keeping taxes low, as low as they can be. Given enrollment increases of 20%, we have had the lowest tax increases in the last eight years that I've been on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Shayna Kalish.
Thank you. I think, as Suba was saying, with our massive enrollment growth, the biggest accomplishment in terms, certainly physically in size and in the impact in the immediate and long-term future of our district that I would hope to have is my participation in the construction and the opening of a new middle school. As part of that, I think that would have a lot of reorganization and a lot of change in the air, which would allow us to sort of push forward with any of the positive cultural changes we wanted that we've discussed here tonight in that school and the new organization of the different grade breakdowns. With that, one of my, one of my dearest hopes is that we can extend kindergarten to a full-day program. It's provided by most of our neighboring districts and it would be a real cherry on top of the offering of the amazing schools that we offer here. I know that I have heard a lot of, not upset maybe, but disappointment that it's not something we can offer. I would work to, I would hope to analyze how Radnor, Plymouth, White Marsh, and Upper Marion did that. And I'm already starting to do a little networking to try and find people who we can talk to and plan with our community on how that's going through. I understand it's a heavy lift, that it's not free, but we need to have the conversation if we're ever going to get this done. And as this portion of change, I would hope to roll it in together. If I could help to make that a talking point for our community, that would be an amazing accomplishment in, pretty little feather in my cap. Another accomplishment I would hope to put forth as a school director would to really be a focus on equity. I was listening to Dr. Everslogg talk at a school board meeting and he talked about an equitable education, which meant to him not providing the exact same thing to each student or providing what each child wants. And that would be the direction that I would hope to proceed through with, as, as a director on the school board, including all of our various specialized gifted and students in the regular education program. If I could really make any impact at all as a school director, I would consider that a real accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Lee.
Thank you. I actually have a lot of ambition for the next four years, should I be elected. First, you know, I would want to make significant progress in executing our strategic plan. It's ambitious and sets a vision for the schools that's, that I think will be, will be great. I'd want to, you know, tackle the enrollment increases. I think we have, you know, an ambitious new school project. We want to make sure that all of that, we absorb the new enrollment increases, we absorb the, the new construction project without minimum burden on the community, bringing that project in at or under budget. Implementing, you know, a plan to move the school start times back and, you know, address the, the needs of the, the kids and the sleep. And, you know, finally, making a dent in the achievement gap. I think this has been a persistent problem, not only here, but nationally. I think we have the resources and the talent here to make a dent in that. So I'd like to, to make that a priority.
Thank you, candidates. We will now move on to two-minute closing statements delivered by each candidate in the following randomized order. Sean Moore, Christina Fink, Tanya Schreiber, Mary Brown, Suba Robinson, Lucy Klein, Shayna Kalish, and Peter Lee. First, Sean Moore.
Thank you again to the ISC Care, League of Women Voters, and the debate teams from LM and Harerton High Schools for this opportunity to share my thoughts and positions on issues impacting our students and communities from Lower Marion and Narberth. Again, my name is Sean Moore and I'm a lifelong Democrat and 13-year resident of Penn Wynn, where I live with my wife and two sons. Well, actually, one son now is our oldest, is an LM grad and is attending Morehouse College in Atlanta. My professional background, as I shared earlier, spans 20 years funding, evaluating, and supporting issues of social justice and equity for all in philanthropic and nonprofit sectors. I'm currently managing the strategic plan for RHD, a human services organization serving thousands of individuals across various needs through our 160 programs across 14 states. Throughout our years in Lower Marion, I have been inactive, been active and involved in starting robotics club at Penn Wynn, serving on the Parent Advisory Council at Ballack Kinwood Middle School, and most recently on Lower Marion School District's Achievement Gap Task Force. And I hope to have your vote as a school board director to ensure that all Lower Marion and Narberth children have access to a 21st century education through the implementation of our strategic plan, access to excellence and equity across schools and curriculum and programs, assurance of fiscal responsibility, and the assurance of open communication and transparency with our stakeholders across the district. In closing, I hope, I recognize that there is much to be done and challenges ahead and I believe I have the experience, commitment to continue excellence in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Fink.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out and listening to all these people. I think everybody here is an intelligent person that really wants to serve the community. I am the only Republican up here. Although you're going to see Mary Brown on the Republican side of the ticket for the vote, as well as Tanya, they are not Republicans, they're Democrats. And they really are Democrats. They are on the ticket because they have a different voice than the current school board Democrats. The current, current school board Democrats chose the people that I think were most like them to keep the, the same thing going. I think you need diverse voices on the school board. So I am hoping that you can not only vote for me, because I do have a different voice. I would bring constructive discourse. I would bring a different way of looking at things, because I'm not of the same party and I'm not beholden to the party. I would make the best decisions that I think for my kids, for you out there, for my neighborhood, for my taxes. And I don't really care what the Democratic Party thinks about my decision-making. But I would always do it in a positive way to try to get good things done for all of us. So sometimes people say, oh, I'm, I'm not going to vote for a Republican. There's three Democrats for every one Republican almost in Lower Marion, so it's very hard to get elected as a Republican. But you really need, my father always said, one-party rule is only good for a fool. And it's really true for all of us. So I hope that my experience as a businessperson, the skills I would bring to the table, my passion for education, the fact that I love this school district and it has done a very good job for my children, the fact that I am passionate about teaching and about bringing education to life. It's not about all this data that everybody consumes in school. It's about connecting it to real life and making them excited. That's why that survey that was talked about in the last debate, where the students are less excited today than ever at Lower Marion and Harerton, it's because we're not connecting it to the real world. We're not taking them out of the classroom, we're not going for field trips, we're not bringing exciting people into the classroom to talk. So I think we have to really have a little bit of a sea change in how we see our district if we're going to keep it being a world-class school district in the future. And I hope you will vote for me. So please consider voting for Fink.
Thank you, Mrs. Fink.
Thank you. Tanya Schreiber.
I have over 20 years' experience developing and redesigning organizations, conducting contract negotiations and financial assessments. I have a degree in industrial labor relations from Cornell University and MBA from Wharton. And I've worked as a Sunday School teacher, the camp director in Lower Marion for years. But perhaps the most practical experience I offer you is the last several years I've spent attending the Board of Commissioner and School District meetings. I understand the curriculum, facilities, finance, labor contracts, and the other school district issues, because I've spent the time sitting there for hours, taking notes, reading the policies, and the zoning law in my free time. I've routinely asked the staff and elected officials follow-up questions and I'm ready to hit the ground running. I've proven my commitment to this process and I hope to bring this experience and expertise to the board. This district needs to keep doing the things that are working. We need to continue to strengthen our children's education, close the achievement gap, and improve the mental and physical well-being of our children. But fundamental policies and leadership need to evolve to ensure that great future, to ensure a strong collaborative and transparent group of representatives committed to the voices of our community and can advance our district. I went to the Republican Party when they approached me and asked me to run on a bipartisan ticket. I agreed to do that because it is time for the decisions ahead of us. They're going to require us to put all of our differences aside for the greater good. And that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Mary Brown.
I'm well aware that I'm probably the oldest person sitting here. I have been a Democrat since 1971. And as I said before, I started teaching at Harerton High School in '74. And I taught 32 years here in Lower Marion schools, Latin. And my five children, my husband Jim Brown is right here. But I'm also a jock. And I wanted to say that Jim and I ran Rosemont Villanova Sports at Harerton for 27 years, three sports and flag football. And we're now on the Narberth Athletic Association Board for over 10 years. So I care about kids. And it's very, very important that we all care about kids. Kids are our present and our future. I have credentials, probably no one is more qualified than I am. I have degrees from Villanova and a master's, graduate work at Bryn Mawr, an executive leadership degree certification from Bryn Mawr College, and a principal certificate from St. Joe's University. I'm in my 46th year of teaching. I probably taught some people in this room. And I think that if we combine our efforts, we can accomplish anything. And it does come down to excellent teaching. When you turn your child over to a first-grade teacher, and there are people here who have taught first graders, it's very, very important that your teacher loves your child and cares to go into how that child learns. And again, I have taught children from first grade to college level. And it's very, very important. I cannot emphasize that too much. As a board member, and I'm asking for your vote, because I will work very hard for you. I have a proven record of working hard for the people in this community, all of us. I will read, study, and prepare and make the best decision.
Thank you. Suba Robinson.
I want to thank everyone again for this forum. I'm Suba Robinson, an incumbent school board director, current vice president of the school board, and a certified public accountant. I'm a lifelong Democrat committed to public education. I care deeply about serving all of the children in our public schools. My four children all attended or currently attend Lower Marion Public Schools. I ran eight years ago because I believed that we needed to make sure that we were adequately preparing our students for the adult life that awaits them, that we needed to continue the excellence of our curricular and co-curricular programs, even in times of unprecedented enrollment growth and fiscal constraints, and that we needed to manage our resources effectively. We've made progress in all areas, including developing an innovative progressive strategic plan that's focused on the holistic needs of our students. We're working on managing enrollment growth while maintaining academic excellence through careful facilities planning and financial management. And our conservative budgeting and managing our AAA bond rating has enabled us to keep within Act One limits. Yet there are significant challenges ahead, the greatest of which is how to continue our high-quality public education while experiencing enrollment growth, fiscal constraints, and attacks on public education. I am seeking your vote, because I believe I can help meet these challenges. I am passionate about the power of education on individual lives and the opportunities it brings forth. As a certified public accountant, I bring organizational, analytical, and financial skills to the board. As an experienced board member, I know what it takes to work with the other board members, the superintendent, and the stakeholders across the district to address our challenges. I would greatly appreciate your support this November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Klein.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. As a longtime volunteer in the district, I especially want to thank the sponsoring organizations and the high school students who have volunteered not only their time, but also considerable energy to organize this event. As a school board director, I will bring my extensive knowledge as a parent and an experienced manager of government and nonprofit programs to continue to provide our kids an excellent education. My top priorities include focusing on the holistic needs of students, providing an excellent education for all students, including curricular stability and rigor, as well as a solid and wide breadth of co-curricular activities, and ensuring spending is fiscally responsible, especially when faced with unprecedented enrollment growth. I will advocate for an academic experience where all students have the opportunity to reach their full potential. I want to achieve, to eliminate the achievement gap, provide appropriate and inclusive education for all students, and focus on their well-being. I will utilize my analytical skills to make informed, well-grounded financial decisions and employ my collaboration skills to engage the broader community in a thorough and transparent process. I also have experience as a city planner with the Regional Planning Commission and am a, am a current board member of the North Ardmore Civic Association, which give me both valuable insight and relevant experience as the district moves forward with building a third middle school, especially with respect to working with our township commissioners and Narberth Borough Council. I am seeking your vote, because I'm passionate about public education. I value the act of listening and making thoughtful decisions and am not afraid to ask the hard questions and take a stand when necessary. I'm not here only because the Democratic Party thinks that I think like them. I am ready to take my knowledge and experience and skills to the next level as a school board director and firmly believe my service can contribute a voice that is reasoned and experienced. Please vote for me, Lucy Klein, on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Shayna Kalish.
Hello again. I'm Shayna Kalish. Thank you to the ISC Care, CSC, Harerton TV, the League of Women Voters of Lower Marion and Narberth, Power and Beckton Scholars Programs for hosting this forum, and Lower Marion and High School, Harerton High School's debate teams for moderating. I wanted to take a moment to offer the one thing that didn't really fit into the question format, and that is how excited I am to do this role. I'm eager to dedicate myself to the academic and, the academic and social experience of our kids. I'm thrilled at the opportunity to make positive change in our community and I'm grateful for the chance to do so. I'm a lifelong Democrat and I'm proud to have earned the endorsement of the Democratic Committee of Lower Marion and Narberth. I worked on the Hillary campaign in 2016 and afterwards felt strongly that if I expected change, I needed to dedicate myself to doing the work. I know the opportunities that I want to see for my children and I fervently believe that every child should have those same opportunities, regardless of race, socioeconomic status, orientation, gender identity, or special need. Should I be elected, my highest priority would be maintaining the academic excellence of our district. I'm committed to providing an equitable education for all students in a fiscally responsible manner. I'm particularly interested in expanding kindergarten to full day. I believe strongly that the plan for the new middle school will both address rapidly growing enrollment and foster an environment of lower class size with greater levels of individualized attention. I'm committed to the long-term success of our schools for the benefit of all children. I'm committed to the long-term success of our schools for the benefit of all children in the district, including my own. Having such young kids gives me a necessary perspective on the board and a vested interest in continued dedication. The marriage of that experience and perspective is why I'm asking for your vote on November fifth. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Finally, Peter Lee.
Thank you again for the opportunity to participate tonight. Thank you to everyone in the audience and the tens of people watching the broadcast. Ten years ago, I was a consultant helping Fortune 500 companies leverage data and technology to improve their effectiveness. Over the last ten years, I shifted the focus of my practice away from corporations and toward partnering with schools and educational nonprofits. I helped these organizations improve student outcomes, analyze program efficacy, and use their budgets more efficiently. I also helped them leverage technology judiciously and identify situations when technology can help, but more importantly, identify when technology won't solve the problem. In addition to my professional background, my children currently attend Harrods, Lower Marion, and Penn Valley, which provides our family with great breadth of experience with the quality of our schools and programs. We are blessed to have world-class schools here, and I believe that maintaining their quality is critical for our community. As an incoming school director, I pledge to listen and help make sound and transparent decisions. As a proud Democrat, I'll work to represent all families in Lower Marion and Narberth. I'm not coming in with a suite of predetermined solutions, and I have no agenda other than the fact that I have relevant experience and believe strongly in civic duty. I ask for your vote on Election Day because I have the skills and experience to help the board provide effective governance to keep our schools great.
Thank you to all candidates.
On behalf of all the sponsoring organizations, we wanted to thank you all for coming and to remind you to vote on November fifth, and also do invite you to come back here tomorrow night to hear the administration's recommendations on school, on healthy school start times. And that'll be tomorrow here at Lower Marion Auditorium at seven. Thanks.
On behi- on behalf of all of us here at Harrods TV, we'd like to thank you for watching today's broadcast of the Lower Marion Board of School Directors Candidates Forum. Please subscribe to our website via the email list link provided, our Instagram at Harrods TV, our Facebook at facebook.com/HarrodsTV, and our Twitter at HarrodsTV. On behalf of all of us here at the Ram Report, we thank you for watching today's broadcast.